Call the work session to order. And we will move right into the city council work session, the transit room tax revenue, and Gary Marks will start off with his presentation.
Good afternoon, everyone. I want to run through a PowerPoint with you. In the PowerPoint, the first few slides will be some review that just shows why we're here today. I heard some comments from you during the council meeting a couple of weeks ago that you'd like to know the basis for the numbers we're working with, so I'm going to run you through the calculation. And then I have some recommendations I want to put out to you, and I think this might be a little simpler than the discussion two weeks ago may have implied it would be, so I hope. So, we'll just get started with the PowerPoint. There are a couple of documents that govern this whole issue of the transit room tax for us. The first is our city code. In the code, it stipulates that at least 70 percent of the tax will be used for tourism promotion or facilities, and that no more than 30 percent used for city services. But then the agreement we have with the Chamber of Commerce goes a little bit farther than that, and it says that we will pay the Chamber 80 percent of the revenue for the Chamber's staffing and the operation of the Visitor Information Center. 10 percent goes to the city for administrative expense, and 10 percent is programmed for tourism-related expenses. Now, I should say that the money that we give the Chamber, a lot of that is wrapped up in the grant programs and such that the Tourism Committee with the Chamber disperses on an annual basis. So, that is that money. So, just to look at where we've been, our last completed year is fiscal '14 in that year. The 80 percent share was almost $43,000 for the Chamber, and then $5,300 each for the two 10 percent allotments that are retained by the city. So, our total collection is right down here at the bottom. Keep that number in mind as we go forward. So, what's changed? Well, we're expecting that when Boulder Falls Inn opens in May, that it will pretty much quadruple our revenue. The numbers I have to show you today are richer than I showed you two weeks ago. As I reviewed the calculations, I felt I'd been extraordinarily conservative. The numbers I'm going to show you now are actually still conservative. I met with Marty Cale with Samaritan, who's over the operation of bringing the hotel online, and he assures me, and actually shared with me some proprietary information that I know that the numbers I'm going to show you are still conservative. So, collections are expected to rise $147,000, from that $53,000 we're used to in fiscal '14 to this coming year, just a tad north of $200,000. That's what the increase looks like, the middle bar for the year that we're currently in. That's simply 11 months of this and one month of that, because we anticipate June will be, this June being the last month of our fiscal year, will be incorporated into fiscal '15. So, let's look at the calculation for Boulder Falls, or Boulder Inn. There are 84 rooms in the new facility, and there are, of course, 365 nights a year. So, if you do the math, there's potentially 30,660 room nights. Now, that's only if every room was filled every night for an entire year. And I'm using a room charge of $100, which I believe, and in fact, know is low. If you didn't do the math, for 100 percent occupancy at the hotel, they would bring in a little north of $3 million in a year. So, estimated occupancy rate at 60 percent is less than the prospectus that they're using for the new hotel. But if we take, and it's close, though, if you take 60 percent of that $3 million, you're at $1.8 million. So, let's bring that 1.8 forward, apply our 9 percent tax rate. What happened to my laser? Oh, my laser died. Oh, there it is. 9 percent tax rate, that would imply $165,000 in revenue. However, our businesses that collect it are able to retain 5 percent of the collection to reimburse them for their collection of the tax. That's $8,200 bucks. So, that takes us down to a net new hotel revenue of $157,000. So, let's take that 157, add it to the existing revenue for fiscal '14, and then acknowledge that there may be a few individuals who would have stayed at hotels here in town who might say, "Hey, nice new hotel, I'm going to go there." I don't anticipate there'll be a lot of that because of the price point difference between a $50 a night room and something north of $100. But there may be some, and we wanted to account for that in our calculation, and I'll just freely tell you, $10,000 is just a round estimate. We really have no way of knowing exactly what that shift would be, but we wanted to acknowledge it in the calculation. So, if you add 157,000 to 53, subtract 10, you're at a total projected revenue of $200,000. Then subtract out our current revenue, again, the net new revenue is $147,000. So, now with that knowledge, I'm going to throw out to you some of my ideas, recommendations about how perhaps we could proceed. The first is a set of recommendations related to our interaction with the Chamber, and then there'll be a short, some sort of detail on what we might want to do with the money that's left for the city. So, for the Chamber of Commerce, to maintain the existing operations under the agreement we currently have, we're looking at about $45,000. It was close to $43,000 in fiscal '14. It'll probably be around 40 for this current year we're in. So, going forward, I thought 45 was a nice round number. I talked to Shelley about Saturday hours for the Visitor Center. I will tell you, as someone who a year ago was looking to relocate to this fair community, and having been offered a great opportunity here, loaded my wife and I up on an airplane and flew out here, drove down from Portland, and it was a Saturday because that's when I could get away, because I still had a job, and it was closed. I don't think I'm alone in that. I think that a lot of people, especially with the medical college, when the students are coming to check us out, a lot of them are here on the weekends, and the Visitor Center is closed. So, we talked, Shelley and I together, Shelley developed some numbers for me, and so we figure at about $15,000, that's all staffing costs, that we could open the Visitor Center for Saturdays.
Is that a full day Saturday, or just like a partial day?
I was going to go in the direction you gave us, and Bill also mentioned that he thought Sunday. I know that I'm going to have a hard time getting anywhere to work on Sunday. So, we could work a full day, which we have no problem with.
And a full day is going to require two staff people. You can't just, because you can't, at some point, you've got to give somebody a lunch. You cannot ask somebody to be there a full day without taking a lunch.
We close for lunch on the Saturday and have lunch. This was not the way to accommodate two of us. I didn't have that many.
I know. That's what, I'm just concerned that $15,000 is not...
We have to close for lunch.
Or maybe limit your hours from 10 to 2, or something like that.
Yes. You know, if I had been here a year ago looking for, you know, I wanted to check out the community, and I had arrived at the Chamber at 12:30 in the afternoon, saw that it was closed for lunch, I would have just come back a half hour later. I don't think that's a big deal. The $15,000 number, correct me if Shelley went wrong, but that's a full day for one person. Yeah. So...
Which is 8:00?
8:30 to 4:00.
8:30 to 4:00.
So, I personally feel like that's an important thing we could do for the visitor industry, which ultimately contributes to our economic growth. So, I think that's a great investment, since we have some opportunities here. So, that takes us down to a subtotal of $60,000. Two weeks ago, in the conversation, I picked up from, I'm not sure who it was, but a couple of you, that maybe this was an opportunity for the Chamber to do something on a larger scale, and if there was some extra money to do that, maybe the council could determine what that might be. I don't know what that is. I put in $10,000. This could either stay here if you have a great idea, or it could go away and go on to the city side of the ledger, but I didn't want to ignore that idea. So, as the little asterisk says, contingent on identifying a desired project, and I just threw in $10,000. I don't know, this could be, you know, our answer to the jamboree. If you want to superjuice guitars under the stars, or something else of that nature, this is certainly a way to do that, and you have the ability now to do that. If you wanted to try to develop a landmark event for Lebanon, what could be better for our local economy if we had something like that? So, that's just an idea, not a strong recommendation on my part. It's just an acknowledgement that that may be something that you, as a council, want to talk about. So, if it is something you want to do, that would take the Chamber's total number to $70,000. So, let's talk about the city. Right now, we have those two 10 percent shares. Maintaining those is about an $11,000 amount. The next item, tourism, or community tourism relations, what that is, is as I rehire my administrative assistant, I have been looking for someone who comes with skills in social media, in websites, in being able to coordinate our press release activity at the city, so that we bring that all under one gatekeeper, one person who is skilled at that area of external communications. That goes to our benefit, both for our community being informed, and also for those people who come and visit us to understand what we're about and what's going on here. So, I'm proposing that a third of that restored position be funded out of the transit room tax. So, that takes us, if that's what we do, that takes us to a total of $38,000, and that's where, the rest of us, I want to get very simple. I'm proposing something I'm calling the Visitor Industry Program Fund, VIP Fund, just because it's catchy, and I think it's something that could stick for us, but as it implies, this is just a general fund where we would put whatever the remaining amount is. So, if my numbers are conservative, then this $92,000 figure is low, and I think it is. So, this is an annual amount that would go into this fund. Until we have the vision, and I think Rebecca brought this up two weeks ago, until we have the vision done, have our strategic plans in place, and then get about the chore of reprogramming how we use our budget resources, I think it's premature to take this new money and just start divvying it out to here or there. I think this is a wonderful opportunity for us, for money for, will probably be primarily capital purposes. Now, that's something we've been starved for years, not decades. To be able to address things like infrastructure in our parks, if there are infrastructure downtown that we want to address, what have you, this would be a fund that we could go to. My proposal is that we wait until we have our strategic plans done, and then we would create a capital improvement plan for the VIP Fund. So, we'd have a CIP for the VIP. So, see, I can compete with the best in the bureaucratic world, so anyway. So, I would propose that we do the CIP for the VIP, and in that CIP, we would delineate the projects that we want to accomplish with this important money. This would be a policy decision by the council that you would probably want to visit on an annual basis as part of your budget process. I don't see this as something where the public is coming in every year and making requests of you. This is capital fund money that needs to be used to address capital needs related to our visitor industry, and I think it's a wonderful opportunity, and I will encourage you to keep it simple today, and trust me, and go with this idea that we need to just sock this money away. Now, with that being said, the mayor recently formed a committee for Mural Park. That committee may come back to you later in the summer and say, "This is what we think should be done. We need X number of dollars, maybe it's 10,000." I personally wouldn't be opposed. If the council said, "Fine, let's take that out of here. We don't have a plan yet, but that's an immediate need that makes sense to us." I don't think we need to be too strict about this, but for the lion's share of the money, I'd like to see it put away and wait until we have our ducks in the row, if you will, with our strategic plans, the whole vision process, and make it part of that reprogramming effort that will happen once we have all these documents in place. So, with that, to complete all this, just so you can have peace of mind in your math head, there is the $70,000 for the Chamber, which could be 60, depending on what you want to do with the 10. So, that's something you may want to talk about now. And then 130 total would end up being retained by the City of Lebanon, and there's that 200 number that we looked at in the calculations. So, now is the time for the council discussion, and if you have questions of me, of course, will be, if you'd like to participate.
I was ready to fight a little bit about this, but I like that. So, I don't have a lot. But I would like to see the extra 10 be a little bit healthier. Me personally, I would like them to have the Chamber, not the Chamber, but the Tourism Committee, to have a little bit more, you know, 10 is great, 20, I think, gives them quite a bit more flexibility to have an impact, and they're, you know, that's all they think about. That's what they focus on, and I would like to see them have a little bit more in that pot.
I have a question. If this were written up, is, would there be wording for a fallback? Like, right now, it's percentages, and now we're talking about some flat amounts. Let's say the hotel burnt down, and they decided not to rebuild it, or something like that. I mean, that's...
Well, we'd have to recalculate all of this.
Would we have...
And actually, we're used to that. It's what we're doing now, you know? So, we would want to relook at it that time. That's a catastrophic event. If it were to happen, I would say we'd take a look at it at that point. Donna, could you pass out those? I've prepared hard copies of the PowerPoint, so you can have the numbers in front of you if you'd like. But as far as percentages, Wayne, was that your question?
Well, no, I was just wondering if you'd write up an agreement that was basically if revenues exceed X amount of dollars, this flat rate kicks in, and if it drops below, then a, you know, the 80, 10, 10 kicks back, or something.
You know, I think it's something we can revisit at some point. Maybe you all will have a different idea, but I have, I struggle with the idea of the percentage, especially when we don't know really where the tax is going to settle out with the new hotel. Seems to me that it, it's like any other thing we budget for. We don't generally budget our budget based on percentages. We don't say, "Well, it's going to, we're going to budget, you know, 50 percent of this fund to address potholes." No, we say, "How much do we need to address potholes?", and we budget that amount. So, I'm proposing the same thing here, that what do we feel like we need to fund the Chamber and their activities for? Well, we know that they've been doing a great job with the $43,000 to $45,000 they're getting right now. Why wouldn't we budget that? And as we go forward in time, if we, we're going to have to have a new agreement with the Chamber, maybe there's some sort of an index you put to that. But I think, it's hard for me to understand why we would apply percentages. I think the lesson here shows us that the existing agreement, when something extraordinary happened, i.e. new hotel, suddenly the percentages put us in a bad spot, because no one anticipated that this would ever happen in 2012, when the agreement was signed.
Yeah, but that's not, I guess I'm not, that's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
I'm just saying that, you know, I'm, I think this is a great formula, but it's almost like it, and if everything performs well, it's a moot point. But if it did for some reason drop, then you'd keep with a fixed amount like we're talking about, unless we drop below.
If it dropped, here, let me go back here.
But if we're cool that it can be redone, at that point, I guess...
What would happen if it dropped? This number, because this number is whatever's left over. After we do these fixed amounts, both to the Chamber and to us, then what's left, which we believe is the lion's share, drops into the VIP Fund. So...
That's where the loss would be.
Yeah, so, it cuts both ways. If my numbers are conservative, as I expect they are, this number's bigger. But if something happens, and people decide Lebanon, Oregon is the last place in the world I want to visit, we're not going to go to a new hotel for whatever reason, then this number becomes smaller. So, or maybe it takes the hotel a little bit longer to ramp up their occupancy rate, so maybe the first year, we don't quite make this number. But I don't know that it really makes a difference. We're socking away whatever we have here for our better, more specific plan.
Well, if that should happen, then Shelley's part of it, the Chamber, would stay constant, and the city's would be reduced, is that right?
The city's part is, how would it be reduced?
The VIP.
Your VIP, or the CI?
Yeah. What I proposed was to keep the Chamber pretty much whole, as they have been, add Saturday hours, and maybe a big project if that's something the council would like them to do. Does that answer any of your questions?
Can I, can I put this in? We all have some questions that I think are really important on this.
Come on, come on up. And just as a point of reference, too, my brother went to do reservations for the Strawberry Festival weekend there. $147 a night, just, it's on their website.
Cool. So...
So, Shelley Garrett, Lebanon Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center. I wanted to clarify, because I like all of the ideas, but things that were popping into my head is that with the $43,000 that we have each year right now, we're giving per year about $19,000 to, well, yeah, between $19,000 to Chita Lake, and $5,000 to the Boys and Girls Club to work on Bob Smith Park. So, part of that percentage that you're already paying us is going for parks, literally. I mean, Chita Lake's going to eventually be city's property if all goes as planned. So, I'm kind of wondering how that, because I really like the idea of investing in your parks, because that does bring people to it, and I love that. So, I'm not sure how that changes the, when you look at the total that we're already doing, you may be, I don't mean that we're, not double dipping, but if you're planning it for parks here, we're already spending money on parks in a different way, through a different process. So, just keep that in mind. And then, two things. I wanted to mention that we've talked about the possibility of putting in a kiosk at the, at the new parking lot. So, if the employee thing doesn't work out, we could have a one-time investment that would probably be cheaper in the long run, because there's no benefits, where we could have a 24-hour kiosk that provides maps and information like that with the new little fancy things on your phone and stuff. But that is expensive, but we've also got the opportunity through Blue Sky to maybe get some grants from, through Doris Johnson and her group. So, that is another option. And then, the last thing I'm going to ask about is the money, the funding that I gave you for Kim, the 15, that would not include benefits, and if I'm going to make her work Saturdays, I'm going to have to make her full-time, and I'm going to have to give her benefits. So, we need to bring that up a little bit.
Shelley, the numbers you gave me had benefits in them.
Right, but that's, but that's not the total. I mean, that's, the total, it was 30-something, and we needed to split that. Just, it needs a little bit more for the benefits.
Oh, I...
Yeah.
I was, I was certain that they had the benefits in it.
She's getting, I think she's getting $15,000 now, so...
Okay.
Yeah, so if we added, and I didn't want you guys to pay for all of her salary, because she, she only does about 70 percent for Visitor Center, but we do need to, we need to look at how we distribute that with the...
Okay, I thought we already did that, but that's fine.
Yeah, well, maybe I'm mistaken, but I don't think so. I think that there's a little bit more for the benefits, if we do that. So, those are my questions, and I just wanted to add that for your thought process. I like where you're going with it. We could live with whatever we can live with.
I'm a big proponent of, I'm sorry, I'm a big proponent of the kiosk. I think having a kiosk there 24/7. Then on Sunday, in the evening, somebody comes by, it's kind of nice to have that information out there.
I think that needs to happen in addition to...
Yes.
The additional staffing. I like the idea of the additional staffing. I think that's a...
That's friendly.
A key cornerstone element of this proposal.
I like the idea of the additional staff, the kiosk. I do not, because vandalism is, other kiosk experience is atrocious.
I do worry about that. We do have, our situation's better with the parking lot now. We don't have the transient activity since we tore the building down. So, we, we have a nice location that's very visible, there's no place to hide. So, I think we could build it with some lighting, and maybe even get some sponsorship people involved, the, you know, Rebecca Grizzle, Chamber of Commerce, kiosks, or something like that. The Linco one. But we could also get some help paying for it.
The kiosk at Walmart by the trail...
Yeah.
Is pretty well-lighted, with a lot of people going by it...
It's destroying it, huh?
Hour after hour, it is destroyed monthly.
I don't have an answer for that. You're probably right.
I think, Shelley, to your first point, it's that it's really important that your committee be involved in, once we get done with the visioning process and we decide what, you know, right now, we give you kind of that pie chart of what it is that we're going to, we're going to do, and, and when we set priorities, what you're already spending is, that's completely relevant, what, to, you know, what are our goals, and that we reestablish some of those parameters of what you do with that money.
Personally, I kind of agree with Rebecca that more money may be allocated to the Chamber, but I, I think the Tourism Committee in the Chamber have done a great job dispersing that money, and I'm not really excited about giving them a priority for what that money goes to. I think they, they know what the needs are, they've done a good job. I do have a little bit of a problem with us double-dipping the parks thing.
And I didn't, I, that was a bad choice of words for a public meeting. I just didn't, and I apologize for that, because I know you would never do that, but I just, you're doing part of it already, I just wanted to make sure that you knew that we're already, I think it's a good direction to go in, so I apologize.
It's not really double-dipping, it's more of a pass-through.
Thank you.
The question is, should we be passing it through to the Chamber, or just directly, using it on parks?
Should we give you that, that $25,000 out of this budget and put it into your, your parks fund thing? In other words, whoever does it, needs to do it. It doesn't matter if we do it. But Wayne, what we do like, we like the pies that tell us what you'd like to see, and we shoot for those percentages. We don't always stick exactly, but it gives us a criteria to shoot for. And the question about the percentage is, everything we do, we never can count on $42,000 or $43,000, because it depends on who's coming to Lebanon and what's going on. So, that's why we're careful with our granting, so we always have enough money left over. We're very good stewards for that. So, I don't think there's a way you can percentage guarantee anything with any of this, because you don't know what's going to happen, but if you have a foundation of what you try to follow, and we want to follow what you want us to do, then, then everybody wins. And if it turns out to be our pie's not a good pie, we need to look at more in this particular area, and not so much in this.
And we can't have a new pie until we get done with this visioning process.
Yeah, I think, I really like your, your basic components of your proposal, Gary. I, I think some additional funding to the Chamber is appropriate, and I've suggested on several occasions, and I thought that the Chamber ought to be setting aside some money itself, you know, to do some, some capital, big kinds of things. And I also really like the idea of not spending the money before we actually have it in the bank, and prudent government services on fee collections. The standard really is have a year's worth of that revenue in the bank before you start allocating it. And that is a key component, is a very strong fiscal recommendation, and I think the council should, should do that. And not only does it provide good fiscal policy, but it also moves us to having a nest egg available for the visioning process when that's complete.
Gary, I, thanks for the numbers and the presentation. I think it's, it's great. I'm a big supporter of the flat rate for the Chamber, and I think if that's something that Shelley can work with, and, you know, you run that risk of overfeeding the machine if you do have that, and now what do we do with it? You know, we have more than we need. That's not, it's not a bad situation to be in, but it's not one you want to be in, and it kind of creates some, maybe some public concern. So, I love the flat rate. What, what I hope we get to today, too, is what about the VIP Fund, and what do we see as priorities for that, or is that just going to completely come out of visioning?
I think it comes out of visioning. I think there's, there's some general ideas about it already, of course.
I know there was some discussion at the last meeting.
Yeah, there's infrastructure in our parks that's crying for, for solutions. There's three of the four major entries in the town have no entry signs. There's probably some things coming up with downtown, which will be revealed through the visioning and the strategic planning processes. So, I think the answer to your question is, the lion's share of this needs to wait until we have our plan in place, and we know what we're doing, and tell them, as Robert says, it's, it's just a prudent move to let that money come in and let it accrue, build a balance. And when the... And when the time comes, we're not only going to have, current year revenues coming in, we're going to have a base of revenue already in the bank that we can then immediately begin to address the tenants of our plan. But it's much more methodical to wait this thing out.
You never spend a hundred percent of your soft money in a given year without really having any history to it. And the one thing that we don't know, even though we think the numbers are conservative, it has happened in other communities when new lodgings come online, is that some of the business models in some of those older properties tends to fade out and it's possible that one or more of those operations may close, which potentially could increase the occupancy at the new facility. You know, so there's going to be a net unknown there and we really don't have any history. We're postulating now off an economic model that we don't have facts on.
But at least you're postulating in, like, like Gary was saying, an extremely conservative environment. So even if, even if, you know, worst case scenario, we were down to maybe twenty thousand of your VIP, that may affect our visioning, but the, but you're gonna, that would be
There's going to be new revenue.
That, there's going to be new revenue and there's going to be enough to fulfill that initial flat part of, of the, of the, the chamber agreement and so that's, you can fairly well guarantee. And if we got to, if we did a new chamber agreement and we got to September and low and behold, good God, none of this is panning out, this is not going to work, I believe we, the, the chamber would come back to us and, and say, well, what, what do we do? How do we fix this? Because I think they're all in the spirit of, you know, we're all in this together. They're just, they're actually just doing us a favor by being the guardian of that money.
I just want to make sure that as we, as we move forward, that we continue to focus on the tourism aspect of this and we don't lose sight of, you know, that we had this found money and now we, we had the opportunity to help here, help there, fix here, fix there. I want to make sure that what we do throughout the whole process, and that includes visioning and beyond for the next year, years to come, that it continues to support local business revenue, that it continues to support tourism activities, tourism functions, that will then bring more business revenue and that in turn supports, it's a three-legged stool, that in turn supports the chamber's drive and mission as well. I just want to make sure that continues because there, there are many, many good things in this community that we could have an impact on. And I think it's critical to maintain that, that mental state of focus that this is what we're driving towards. You know, Cheetah Lake Park is, if that's the big focus, that's a, that's a wonderful focus in my opinion because it's, it's going to draw business. It's going to draw people to our businesses and it's going to help the chambers cause, it's going to help with revenue, it's going to help fill the hotel, the cycle continues. So I want to make sure we just keep that drive in mind as we go forward.
Just basic infrastructure, other budgetary demands.
Or, and I, not to use the word do-gooder projects, but you know, a beautification of this that is going to fade or that's going to be dead in a year or, you know, or supporting a, a local club that then, once they've, once they've spent the grant money or the money that's given to them, that's it, it's done. It was a one-time event and it's over. I'd like to see things kind of perpetuate.
And Jason, I would suggest the best way to have that assurance is to wait it out like we're talking about and put the plans together so that we're making specific policy decisions or rather you are, making policy decisions specific to answering that question and giving you that assurance that you want.
Well, I'm comfortable with it.
And I think that it's possible that there may be some analysis, you know, that we might want to think outside the box
Absolutely.
On some of those grant sources. For instance, one of the things I suggested at the last meeting was the Boys and Girls Club. Maybe if we had a proposal where we saw evening and weekend childcare opportunities, you know, if, if, if that was going to enhance access around special events, you know, I'm in favor of that, even though it would be something, you know, that would not necessarily be first blush tourism.
I want to, I, that concerned me because when we were discussing Boys and Girls Club and I, just because I want to be sure that we're crystal clear that not only is Jason right, but we have a legal obligation to be sure that it directly relates to tourism. And that, that was my concern when we were, when, when the discussion was revolving around the Boys and Girls Club. I'm not opposed to the Boys, to, to us supporting them, but I want to be sure that any support we give to them is legal. And, and, and I don't know, you know, we, we got some opinions on whether or not that specific support would be legal and, and, and not everybody agreed that it would, that it, that it's kind of a stretch. So we need to be really crystal clear that we keep the legal definition of what is it that tourism dollars can be, you know, because if you, because if you, if you use that logic that you just use to think outside of the box to fund childcare, you can use that logic for almost anything. And there are, like Jason said, a lot of great things in Lebanon. I just want to be sure if we, if we, if we do support something like that because we believe in it, we use it with the right dollars, which might be general fund dollars.
It needs to have a direct, a direct result though, or a direct improvement or supplement, directly supplement a tourism activity or a, a business generating related activity that brings someone in and keeps them in our community for a day or two or three. As long as it can fit that, I'm fine with it. But you get in that nebulous area of, of things and it could get a little difficult, a little hazy and I think that might create some, a little stir.
Let me interject something. I, I had a phone call from Jim Roof, our, one of our previous city, what was he, Operations Manager? Wonderful person, love him, loves to bicycle. He's, he loves bicycle tours and he called me this morning about doing a walking tour, riding tour of the parks in the area. And part of that convention that I went to in Astoria talked about the, the money that comes in from bicycle tourism. It's huge. I mean, we're talking thousands and thousands of dollars. And that is a perfect kind of a thing to give them some seed money to start something like that. He's got an organization, I think he's on a city committee, I'm not sure which committee it is, but what a great idea. Those are the kind of things when we have the funds, we can give them seed money to help do the marketing or some planning and something like that. That perpetuates and grows and then, then pretty soon you don't have to fund it because it's doing its job. And I wanted to also correct, Gary's right, he recollected my sixty-one-year-old memory. Fifteen thousand is correct. I was thinking that was before the benefits, but now I remember that's after benefits. So the fifteen thousand he's quoted is accurate and I humbly apologize. I don't even want to look at you because I can just hear about this, my memory. How old? Got more than you'll ever remember. How old again? Sixty-one.
Just getting started.
So I'm, I'm in favor of what you're proposing for now and as long as we increase a little bit more, what we're, I would like to see that, increase a little bit more of what we're giving to the chamber.
Are you talking about the Tourism Attractor project?
The ten thousand?
The ten thousand?
Yeah.
Correct. I, I propose that that be bumped to twenty and that everything else I, I love. And then we, and then we go into a holding pattern.
Is, is there any direction that the council would want to give for that twenty thousand dollars? If that's the amount that you want to do?
I think at their discretion at this point, until we have, until we get through the visioning process, they can choose to sit on it and wait to see what comes up and, and we reallocate that pie. What does that look like? And we come up with some joint visions or whatever.
I would throw out a suggestion that that part of the money be used for ball field developments within the parks for tournaments.
The extra ten or the whole twenty?
Extra ten.
I think that'll, well, I'm going to hold off because I think a lot of this revolves around, for me, participation in the visioning process. And I have, I have a lot of things on paper that they don't belong out today because it's just not the right time. But when we get to that process, that's when we can decide as a group, we can vision up where, yeah, how we want to go. The first, the first year, you know, this is an annual thing too, so this is, year by year we can, am I wrong? We can adjust this?
It was a two or three-year contract, but we're willing to do whatever you want.
But we can do whatever. We can make it a one-year, an annual contract.
We need to come up with a new contract. I think we, we want to draft that in a way that it's flexible between the parties, that we can, we even adjust as we go along.
However, if I'm going to give a person full-time and benefits, I don't want to take
that away ever.
I think the intent of council is that would be the absolute last thing that would go, would be that person for, for the Saturday, et cetera, so.
And by the way, do you, if you like that idea, we can make that happen before the Strawberry Festival. It's the perfect time because we get so many people. So just give me the direction on that. I'm sure she'd be willing to do that. And by the way, we cut a check for five thousand for the Boys and Girls Club for Bob Smith Park this week because my board approved it after the committee said so.
I think what we need to do is we need to redraft the agreement. It might be a little premature to try to decide how to spend this money when the hotel isn't even open yet. So I might signal a little caution there because we're under an agreement we have right now that specifies otherwise and the money's not there. I would say let's hold our horses for this year and let's concentrate on, on developing an agreement that addresses all of what we want to do. I would suggest the next step is for Trey and I to come back with an agreement that we've, we've negotiated with Shelley in the chamber for your review.
Is the rest of the council okay with, with an extra ten thousand dollars on that?
Yes.
I like Rebecca's suggestion for, you know, bumping that up to twenty, but I, I think that, I think their committee process at this point in time should be given the latitude.
Let's be clear about that. That extra twenty thousand would be envisioned for fiscal fifteen, sixteen.
Right.
So it wouldn't be now, but it'd be the budget that we're all going to be reviewing here in a month or two.
Right. And, and nothing new for this year. The new revenue that would come in this year would go into the city's capital fund.
Well, actually, whatever the collection is this year would be divvied out based on the eighty-ten-ten agreement we're under.
Right.
Yeah.
So whatever new agreements, basically you can have a July one, boom.
That's when it kicks off.
Yeah.
Gary, how does the city collect that, that tax revenue?
How does the city collect it?
Does that come on a per annum basis or does that come on a monthly basis?
That's a Dean question.
Quarterly. We get it working. We get it quarterly, so what comes in like June, we'll get July, August and we kind of move around. And that's what I was going to say, when we're talking about this extra twenty thousand, that may not be available next year because we'll send that to the chamber a little bit each quarter. So they won't have a pot of twenty thousand till the end of next year, you know, twelve months from now.
But they'll know what to plan for.
So, so they can plan it for the, the next year. So we're talking a while. I'm not going to write Shelley a check Jan, July first for, you know, eighty thousand dollars, you know, it comes a little bit at a time.
Will there be, so if we're going to have, if we're going to fund a position in, before June, we would have to kick the chamber a little bit of money so she could start that program
You would.
Before the Strawberry Festival. So we, that, that's a different discussion as well.
Yeah, that'd be on top of the existing agreement.
So.
So we have April, May and June to fund that if that's what we decided to do.
Yeah, and fifteen thousand being an annual number, you're looking at a little more than a thousand dollars a month. So if you wanted to start, what, May?
That's when we start getting busy.
You're probably looking at twenty-five hundred bucks, something like, like that.
But don't your projections show it bumping ten for the year? This year, it left unchanged? Wouldn't that
That's true, but, but that's, that's governed by the agreement. Eighty percent of all of that goes to them.
That's what I'm saying. And if she got eighty percent of the additional ten, that would cover your staffing, in theory.
In that last budget amendment, I did up how much money was projected to get in this year, which upped how much I was sending to the chamber this year. I, I don't know what the number was, but I did up it more than last year.
You're saying you can afford it now.
In that last budget amendment.
So she just needs permission to be able to take a little bit more of the money there they have now and redirect it to staffing.
So because it involves a long-time employment, I would like to have something, a contract for that, at least just for the employee's point of view. We don't have to work, work the rest out before. And my board, my chair is here. Did you have anything you wanted to add to that, Don Fountain?
Well, the only thing I would say is as far as the, the tap, as far as the extra ten or the twenty thousand dollars, I think that would be something for the council to prioritize for the committee, how they would like to see that.
It really does help us.
We're doing what you would like us to do.
Well, and that's part of the visioning process. So as soon as we get
When that comes in.
And you'll, you know, you guys are, are part of that process, so, so I think it should, you know.
It's kind of a prime opportunity for everyone to be together on this and collaborate. It's really, it's really all coming at the same, at a great time, so.
And just, you know, to focus everyone's attention, we're, we're still, you know, twelve to eighteen months away from having that picture. I mean, we're going to finish up this one cycle here this summer and then we're going to go through the second phase of it. So it's going to be, it's going to be fifteen to sixteen months, you know, before we see that.
You'll start seeing money because it comes in quarterly.
I'm not talking about the money, I'm talking about the, the topics, the vision, the, where we actually have the goals.
Yeah, the full, the full, what you're saying, Robert, the full force of the vision and the strategic planning won't be seen until fiscal seventeen, which is the year sixteen, seventeen. Because we're not going to, we're not going to know what our strategic plans look like until probably this next winter, maybe going into early spring, we'll probably be wrapping all that up, prioritizing which focus areas we're going to move forward on and then building that all into our budgets and that'll be the budget for sixteen, seventeen.
Right. So personally, we've got, we've got some time and, and we'll have plenty of opportunity to
We can carve that, we can carve that little vision out though, for this particular piece of pie.
So what I'm hearing from the council then, maybe we can wrap this up for everyone, is that we need to negotiate an agreement with the chamber along the lines of what we've been discussing here. You'd like to see the, the Tourism Attractor item here go from ten to twenty thousand dollars. And then we also need to draft some changes to our code that reflects the new direction we're going rather than what we have in the, in the language right now. Is that, and then
Big versus ratio.
And then Dean and I will make whatever adjustments for this next budget that are implied from what we've discussed here. So you'd see that in a couple of months when we're looking at the budget.
Okay, then, so how are we going to fund that position starting April one?
Well
If, if that's what we want to do.
We'd have to prorate it because you, you know, it wouldn't be, you, it wouldn't be appropriate to give us the full year. We've already
Well, let's talk to Shelley and see what it's going to cost and see.
Yeah.
We've already increased the, the funding this year over what we had last year based on the new motel coming in.
You're talking fifty and sixty now.
No, I'm talking right now. I, I came back with a budget amendment at the last council meeting
Okay, yes.
Which increased the funding to the, the chamber at that meeting.
Absolutely.
So
Based on May, June, July.
Based on May, June and July and based on when we planned this year's budget, I didn't know revenues were going to come in so high, so we budgeted forty thousand this year, we brought in fifty last year. So I raised this year up plus a little bit more for the new motel. So, you know, our revenues this year are already higher than they were last, will be last year. So I've already
You're only talking about additional twelve, twelve fifty a month.
Twenty-five, twenty-five hundred dollars, about.
But understand that we make decisions on funding, I've got a whole bunch of them sitting there to be done in April, on how much we could come in because we don't give it away unless we've got it.
Right.
So I don't feel comfortable with your projections to go ahead and take fifteen thousand. Here's the thing, because I don't want someone else to miss having a great tourism day because I've got a new employee being paid on Saturday.
Why don't we do this? Why don't, why don't Trey, Trey and I develop an agreement with Shelley, all execute it on your behalf, understanding the direction you want to go. We'll get that position in place as quickly as it's feasible and as the money looks like we can support it and we'll all go away happy.
And, and the bottom line is, if you bring the And, and the bottom line is, if you bring the, the position on the first of May, you're only looking at two months for this year. So that additional ratio, even with the current agreement, is more than going to generate that additional income to fund that position for the rest of this calendar.
I believe you're right, Robert. I think it's built into this number right here.
Yeah.
Take eighty percent of that.
Exactly.
It's funded.
So it's already there, and you don't have to, uh, sacrifice any of the discretionary monies that are being funded for the projects.
Right. And on top of that, I think if we execute an agreement, that gives Shelley and her employee the security that we're going to, we're going to stick with it.
I completely trust working with Gary. He's, I, we can work that out in the paperwork of it. So, and I know my board does too, so. And we trust you too, I mean, but we really like you.
Thanks, Shelley.
Thank you, Shelley. Okay, so you have a direction, Gary?
Um, I think I do. If, if everything I recited to you sounds right, that's how we'll proceed.
Sounds good.
So then, you'll, you'll, between now and the time we actually see the budget, this, this, uh, extra money amount, you know, may get in clearer focus. You may use these numbers or you may refine them somewhat.
Yeah, we'll, we'll create a VIP fund. It'll be in the budget that, when you see it. Um, we'll put all the pieces together.
Awesome.
Thank you.
See you later.
See you, Bob.
Okay, any other questions? Comments? Our next meeting is April eighth, six P.M., regular session here, while adjourned as work session.